I would like to call the regular meeting of July 22, 2024 to order. Please stand to join me in the page of allegiance. Will the secretary please call roll?
Commissioner Benninger.
Present.
Commissioners Camilla. Commissioner Leo.
Here.
Commissioner Pham.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Vice Chair Ramos.
Present.
Chair Oliva.
Here.
Chair Quorum has been reached at 5:31.
Before we begin, I would like to remind my fellow commissioners to turn your microphones on when speaking and off when not speaking. And when speaking, please place the microphone about four inches away from you. Thank you. Members of the public may attend Planning Commission meeting in person or virtually via Zoom. I now invite the Commission Secretary to describe the way the public can access and participate in this meeting.
This meeting is being livestreamed via our portal at www.santa-anna primegov.com-public-portal and to YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaana videos. If you would like to provide public comment, you may do so in the following ways. Join the meeting via Zoom. Enter meeting ID number 811-026-06254. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, select the hand icon to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the name you entered. You can also join the meeting by calling 669-900-6833. Enter meeting ID number 811-026-06254. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, press 9 to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the last three digits of your phone number. After you're called upon, you may press 62 and meet yourself. For those who are attending this meeting in person and would like to provide public comment, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into the secretary. All speakers will have three minutes to speak. I will alert you when your time is up.
Moving on the public comments, moving on to public comments on non-agenda or non-public hearing items. Secretary, does anyone wish to speak?
If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into the secretary. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please select the hand icon and ame yourself. If you are calling in and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please dial 9 and then 6 to ame yourself. We will wait for a few seconds. Chair, we do not have any speakers.
Moving on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve item A minutes from July 8, 2024?
I move to approve A and B of the consent calendar.
And item B, excused absences. We have a motion by Commissioner Wu. Do, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Benninger. Secretary, please call for the roll call vote.
Commissioner Benninger.
Aye.
Commissioners Camilla. Commissioner Leo.
Aye.
Commissioner Pham.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ramos.
Aye.
Chair Oliva.
Aye.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioners Camilla absent.
That concludes the consent calendar items. Moving on to the public hearing. I will now review the process for the public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will be opened. The applicant will be given the opportunity to speak, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. The applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. The public hearing will be closed. Discussion will return to the commission with formal action taken to approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address strictly voluntary. State whether you support, oppose, or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Please note, decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days by any interested individual or party. Recommendations on this item will be forwarded to the city council at a later date for final determination. This is the time and place for conditional use permit numbers 2024-09 and 2024-10 for the property located at 1951 East Dyer Road, Unit H, located within the specific development number 88 SD-88 zoning district. Before we begin, do any commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item? Seeing none, Matthew Kilroy will now provide a brief presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for welcoming me. To sum up this item before you, Nexus Market is requesting approval of conditional use permit numbers 2024-9 and approval to make a determination for public convenience or necessity, PCN to allow the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-premises consumption, and CUP 2024-10 to allow after-hours operations at a proposed convenience store located 1951 East Dyer Road, Unit H. Staff is recommending the adoption of a resolution approving these CUPs as conditioned. The site has a general plan land use designation as district center medium DC-2. The site zoning classification is for a specific development 88 in the SD-88 zone. The surrounding land uses include office and industrial uses to the north, south, and west, with an existing hotel and the city of Tustin to the east. The building is located on a 4.07 acre lot with the subject unit taking up only 3,000 square feet. On February 2, 2016, the city council approved ordinance number NS-2891, which approved the rezoning of the project site from light industrial M1 zone to SD-88 in order to facilitate the development of the heritage, a mixed-use development project now known as Broadstone Village that was completed in 2020. The development consists of three mixed-use buildings containing a total of 1,221 apartment units, 12,675 square feet of retail and commercial space, and 5,415 square feet of restaurant space on 18.84 acres. Nexus Market will be occupying 3,000 square foot unit within one of the buildings, the Broadstone Arden, in the heart of the development. On June 3, 2024, the applicant submitted the subject CUP applications to the Planning Division. This is a site photo of the northern elevations and main entrance for the proposed Nexus Market. This is the site plan of the subject property. This is the floor plan as shown. The alcohol display will take up a fraction of the floor space, 136 square feet. The cashier is located in the center of the market to ensure maximum visibility. I will now discuss CUP 2024-9 and the alcohol sales analysis. Based on the analysis of the project, Planning Division has found that the subject site is consistent with the goals and objectives found in the land use element of the general plan. It is located in the heart of the Broadstone mixed-use development, which is within the commercial core of the development, neighboring other commercial uses, and is not located in close proximity to any parks, playgrounds, religious institutions, or schools. The sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at the proposed location will provide an ancillary service to the residents of the Broadstone Development and customers of Nexus Market by allowing them the ability to purchase a variety of staple goods, as well as consumer goods, including alcoholic beverages. This would allow Nexus Market to remain economically viable and compete with nearby stores offering the same types of service. Operational standards applicable to the ABC license pursuant to Santa Ana Municipal Code, Section 41-196F, and conditions of approval will mitigate any potential impacts created by the use and will ensure that the use will not negatively affect the surrounding community, thereby mitigating impacts to public health, safety, and welfare. The Santa Ana Police Department is satisfied that the operational standards and conditions of approval will mitigate any potential impacts to the surrounding community and does not oppose the granting of the CUP. According to SAPD crime statistics, they found that within police grid number 250, it ranks 75 out of 102, which is the 20th percentile below the 20% threshold established by the state of high crime. Conditions of approval, property maintenance agreements, and standards in the Santa Ana Municipal Code will address any potential negative impacts. I will now discuss CUP 2024-10 and the after-hours analysis. The subject site is consistent with the goals and objectives found in the land use element of the general plan located in the heart of the Broadstone mixed-use development, which is within the commercial core of the development. The purpose of regulating establishments that operate after-hours is to set forth operating practices and procedures and to minimize impacts to the surrounding areas. Staff has reviewed the applicant's requests for after-hours operation and has determined that after-hours operations at the subject location with recommended conditions of approval will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. For example, the good neighbor policy is one of the many conditions of approval that will ensure patrons comply with applicable noise, parking, and loitering regulations. In addition, the storefront windows will be glazed in compliance with the Santa Ana Municipal Code to mitigate any light from the interior of the business to the nearby residential units. Furthermore, the property currently has onsite security, guards that will be increased during the nighttime hours to enhance safety. The Police Department is satisfied with the operational standards and conditions of approval will mitigate any potential impacts to the surrounding community and does not oppose the granting of the CUP. Conditions of approval, property and maintenance agreement, and standards in the Santa Ana Municipal Code will address any potential negative impacts. A PCN determination is required for this project because Nexus Market is located in census tract number 755.16, where the ratio of existing retail off-premises alcohol licenses to population in the census tract exceeds the ratio of retail off-premises alcohol licenses to population in the county, resulting in an over-concentration as determined by ABC. ABC allows a maximum of five off-premises alcohol licenses for census tract number 755.16, and currently there are 16 active ABC licenses. However, it is important to note that none of the existing ABC licenses are located within the city of Santa Ana, and if CUP number 2024-9 is approved, this will be the first ABC license within the census tract. With that being said, this is a local map with a proposed Nexus Market and existing Broadstone mixed-use development to the northwest of the ABC map. It exists in a small portion of Santa Ana that juts out east past the 55 freeway. Within the ABC map, there are an existing ABC types 20, 21, and 85. I will now present the PCN findings. Although there are many other establishments selling alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption nearby, none of those establishments are within the city of Santa Ana and do not offer the same neighborly shopping opportunity as Nexus Market. The ability to purchase alcoholic beverages with other convenience store items will offer customers a more complete shopping experience and will provide a service to Nexus Market customers by eliminating the need for additional shopping trips to other off-sale alcoholic beverage establishments nearby. The addition of general alcohol sales for off-premises consumption at Nexus Market ensures the store will remain economically viable and it offer a full selection of items that convenience store customers come to expect. Operational standards, conditions of approval like the good neighbor policy and property and maintenance agreement, and standards in the Santa Ana Municipal Code will mitigate any potential detrimental effects should any arise by enforcing policies, protocols to ensure that alcohol sales are handled in a responsible manner to deter crime, loitering, and any other activity that should be detrimental to the surrounding community. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the SEQA guidelines, the project is categorically exempt from further review, and there are no fiscal impacts associated with this action. Staff recommends the adoption of a resolution approving CUP numbers 2024-09 and 2024-10 as conditioned and making a determination of public convenience or necessity. Secondly, staff recommends authorizing staff to issue a letter of convenience or necessity to the State Department of Alcoholic Beverages Control. I'm available to answer further questions, as well as the applicant representing Nexus Market, Char Portinesh, is in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Benninger.
Just a question. When we're talking off-hours, what are the hours of operation?
So the hours of operation are 8 o'clock to midnight for the majority of the time. The after-hours are on Friday, open until 2:00 a.m., and then on Saturday, open to 2:00 a.m. as well.
Also interesting to see a large census tract and see all that mileage covered when you look at the mileage between stores and all that.
Yeah.
That's all the question I have. Almost it.
Commissioner Leo.
No questions.
Commissioner Wu.
A follow-up question to Commissioner Benninger. Can we go through the map? It's not anything to do with this particular issue, but the cumulative effect of these condition where we're allowing harder alcohol sale. And even though, you know, some of these things are in Tustin, and you got it within buildings and all that, and we're doing this zoning update, things are just falling into that crack. I think that's where you're getting it. It's like, it looks like density from one way, but when you look at it a little further, it's not, you know? So I just wanted to point that out, that as we begin our update, you know, I don't know if we need to make it more clear, or... But I think what you did in the recommendation is that you're going to look forward to doing the enforcement part of it, right? Okay. So, but I just wanted to point out to all of us that in regulating and controlling the kind of alcohol sale and the cumulative effect on our community, you know, for health and mental health reason, we are proving a lot of them, you know? And although they're not in one area, one district, and all that, there will be one day where we are saturated, right? So I don't know what to do about it, but I just want to point it out.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Pham?
No comments.
Vice Chair Ramos?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
I don't have any questions or comments as well. The public hearing is now open. If we have any speakers on Zoom?
We have not received public comment prior to the 3:30 deadline. If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on this item, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into the secretary. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon and ame yourself. If you are calling in and would like to comment on this item, please dial 9 and then 6 to ame yourself. I will wait for a few seconds. Chair, we do not have any speakers.
Thank you. I realize I have to backtrack. Does the commission have any comments or questions for the applicant? No questions? Okay. Would the applicant like to speak on the matter? Recording, Secretary, have we received any written communication? We already went through that. Can we close the public hearing now? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve this matter?
I'll make the motion to approve both CPU requests.
As well as the letter?
Yes.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Benninger. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Leo. Secretary, please call roll for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Benninger.
Yes.
Commissioners Camilla. Commissioner Leo.
Aye.
Commissioner Pham.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ramos.
Aye.
Chair Oliva.
Aye.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioners Camilla absent.
That concludes the public hearing portion of the business calendar. Moving on to the regular business calendar. This is the time and place for general plan consistent, consistency finding for abandonment number 2024-01, street vacation adjacent to 209 West Civic Center Drive and former Church Street. Before we begin, do any commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item? Seeing none, Public Works Agency staff will now provide a brief presentation.
Is your mic on? Now it is. Okay. Thank you. So I wanted to congratulate both the new chair and vice chair. So congratulations and welcome. My name is Monica Suter. I'm the development manager for Public Works, and tonight we're going to be talking about item two, and this is Yvonne Soto of our team as well. And we are going to be talking about what our item is tonight, which mainly what we're here for is to just establish and have a recommendation and have this body indeed concur that this is our abandonment is in consistency with the general plan. All right? And that's really what's going on. So this is for the portion of Church Street and Civic Center Drive vacation. All right. So as you can see, the blue area there is the entire area, just to give you the location map, and that's over there at the northwest corner of Sickmore and Civic Center Drive. And basically, what we are looking to do is have the excess right-of-way to be vacated. And again, looking for conformance tonight, having this body have that finding. Okay, so moving on to the next slide. In a more detailed map, we have the former Church Street right-of-way in green, as shown in green, and the blue is really what's going to still need to be retained for a corner cutoff for proper curb ramps. And that green then turns blue here, because we like to change our colors on you. All right? So that's basically the same as the green area. And in terms of these different goals, and the general plan consistency is that this proposed vacation is in conformance with the land use and mobility element of the city's 2022-2024 general plan. In line with these various goals listed below, one, to encourage investment for the private site adjacent for regional consistency with the Orange County Transportation Authority Master Plan of arterial highways, and infrastructure condition to make sure that the vacation, it will leave the existing improvements intact for the roadway and allow for full pavement and sidewalks. And so our recommendation tonight is simply to have this body determine that indeed it's in conformance with the general plan and for this vacation of the excess portion of Church Street. So thank you very much. That's basically it.
Thank you. Does the commission have any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Benninger.
Thank you. Sorry, Ma'am Monica. I have to cover that up for you. So by vacating this, then we allow the land to be sold in which someone can build on it? Is it big enough to build on?
So it's adjacent to the other portion of what is there, and so the exact details of how that will be transmitted to the developer is in conversations with the city attorney's office, and so they're making sure everything's copacetic and done properly. So, but the goal is that the adjacent landowner will indeed have this vacated part.
And how many square feet is this that we're talking about?
I don't have that memorized. I apologize, but, so I'm not going to guess because I would be wrong. I should know that, but I do not have that information handy. Apologies. Would you like me to look that up and get back to you?
No, I'm almost it.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Leo.
No questions.
Commissioner Wu. Commissioner Pham.
In general, are we proposing this abandonment in terms of not wanting to use city funds to maintain this area of the land?
If I can provide an answer. So this particular vacation is a portion of, the right-of-way is no longer there. It's a remnant of prior property consolidation. It's a part of the old YMCA that has been disposed to a developer via a development agreement, and during the process of reviewing the title work on the site, it was discovered that there had been outstanding land consolidation that was never legally, or never legally described. So this is really a cleanup process for the city and the county because the land has already been conveyed to developer as part of the YMCA development project.
Vice Chair Ramos?
Yeah, so kind of continuing on that, so this is essentially just a formality.
It's a formality in terms that we need to do this in order to effectuate the land transaction that has been completed and what was sold, but the development agreement has already been approved, the property has already been transferred to the owner, but the new owner under the development agreement. What we need to do is to clean up the title so that the transfer of land reflects what was in the development agreement.
Thank you. And then just one more thing, I noticed that the resolution, the resolution. One of the documents, I believe, names for the formature. So just for...
We'll fix that.
Thank you.
I have no questions for staff. Does the commission have any comments or questions from the applicant? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve this matter?
I have a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pham.
I'll second that.
And we have a second by Commissioner Benninger. Secretary, please call for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Benninger.
Aye.
Commissioners Camilla. Commissioner Leo.
Aye.
Commissioner Pham.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ramos.
Aye.
Chair Oliva.
Aye.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioners Camilla absent.
That concludes the business calendar. Moving on to administrative matters. We have an item up for discussion, Commissioner Benninger's request for a presentation from the Orange County Fire Authority Planning Manager. Well, Ali will explain this process.
Sure. Chair, I know this was a request by Commissioner for potential discussion by the Planning Commission to follow your process on how to bring an item about on the agenda. As part of just discussing, you know, staff to staff, I spoke to the fire chief about this request just to provide him with advanced information and be in preparation. During my discussion process, I discovered that he shared the fire department, OCFA, is conducting a master fire, needs... the fire department, OCFA, is conducting a master of fire needs assessment and fire facility plan. They're in the process of doing that. And what that is, is assessing the needs and also what, you know, the equipment that is required based on the needs. The plan he envisioned would be... Kibbe checks would be complete within the next five to six months. So I just want to share that information with you, Commissioner, and the planning commission. It might be appropriate to wait to that point in time to have it, you know, be shared once they're completed with the planning commission so that you would have the most current, up-to-date information about the need assessment and the master fire plan facility. Of course, you're free to discuss the items, at least in terms of telling us what you would like to see if you want to proceed ahead with placing this matter on the agenda upon the concurrence of at least three commissioners. So you could wait, I guess, to make it very clear, you could wait five or six months and get the full details, or we can present you with some information upon your request, and please provide us any specific information on what would you like to see if that's the case.
I would go ahead and wait the five months. It's music to my ears to hear that they're now looking, assessing what they have. I assume they're looking at what potential problems they could run into, and thus, that's really what I want someone to end up doing. My time in the chemical industry was always good to review where we were and what we could handle if there was a problem. And if they're doing that, then I'll gladly wait five months to hear it.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Chair, based on that, you can move forward with the remainder of the agenda.
Yes. So that concludes the administrative matters. Moving on to staff comments. Does staff have anything they wish to share with the Commission?
I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Wu?
At several previous meeting, staff gave us a schedule of zoning update meetings in the community. I would highly suggest if the commissioners had a chance to attend them, please do. They have a really interesting, innovative process. Unlike previous meetings like this with the community, a presentation is made to the community, and then you have Q and A. What they did was broke up the different issues and had a map. It's like monopoly things where you could put something on there. So for the record, there is a Chinatown now because I put one there. But what was interesting about that, as they had the little station, and our friend over there was there, people came up. They asked question, and staff directly talked to them about and gave them information they needed and needed to know. And from the comments that I heard from residents, they really appreciated that and having an opportunity to chime in. Those that managed shopping center was also glad because they had a chance to hear residents' concern and talk with staff as well. So I thought it was very good, and it was a different process than we normally have seen, but it was very good and well attended. And it was at El Salvador Park was the one that I went to.
Thank you for sharing. Commissioner Benninger, any comments or questions?
I'd just like to follow up on Commissioner Wu. I attended one of them also. It's at the First Street Village, and I thought it was very, very well done and also very well attended on it. So it's good program. I do have a question for staff. I don't know if we can comment or discuss if we're any closer to having Realist Bristol here in front of us? Any view where we are with that project?
While I was not scheduled on agenda, real quick update. You should be expecting a call from staff polling you for a hearing date, which is on a regular meeting night, but also we'll be asking if you have time for additional meetings, subsequent meetings, should it require multiple meeting dates. Look for that in the upcoming week.
Question answered. Thank you.
Commissioner Liu?
No comments.
Commissioner Pham?
Yes, I just want to make a few observation. I've been noticing that, you know, obviously we are all aware that we have street vendors in the city, and certain locations are very popular. And my observation is that just this summer, for some reason, there's been a lot of car accidents and, you know, cars running, street lights, or slipping and hitting intersections, things like that. So I would just encourage, you know, the city residents to be careful because when things get very popular, there's a lot of people on the sidewalks, and then I see kids running kind of, you know, in the sidewalk and not really, parents not taking, paying attention. And that's, you know, we don't want that to be an issue, regardless of whether or not, you know, the street vending is an issue or not. It's just a public safety aspect of it. I would just kind of call special attention to that just in case, you know, parents don't let their kids wander and then there's something that's unfortunate that happens on a regular day, you know. No other comments.
Vice Chair Ramos?
And no comments.
I don't have any comments or questions either. That concludes today's meeting. The next regular meeting is scheduled for August 12, 2024 at 5:30 in the council chambers.